...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're invited to remain standing for a moment to contemplate our service to the public. Thank you. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
We are in compliance, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like the order of the agenda altered in any way? Supervisor Teetz.
Yes, I'd like to move the Parks Department presentation up to, let's say, just after public comment.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Moving the Parks Department annual report right after public comment. Okay, we'll do that. Also, one other change the Chair proposes, moving the closed session to after announcements, just prior to adjournment. Is there any objection to that? Moving the closed session to the very end of the agenda before adjournment. Okay, we'll proceed in that manner. Next is approval of the October 8th, 2019 meeting minutes. Supervisor Renard, please.
I move approval of the minutes?
Moved and seconded to approve the October 8th, 2019 meeting minutes as printed. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Next is public comment. Do we have any registrants for public comment this evening?
I believe the only one's for public hearing.
That is for the public hearing, okay, good. Okay, next we are going to what was number 10, the annual report from the Parks Department. Kevin Weisman. Mary Truman is also here from the Parks Department.
All right, thank you, guys. I am not Joe Namor. I'm Kevin Weisman. And Mary Truman is here from our department as well. She's our department administrator. Joe has retired from our department and passed on some words of wisdom and some things that he wanted to make sure we passed on. And one of those was that he felt like we needed to make sure that we knew that our annual reports should be not less than 25 minutes and should go up more towards 30 minutes. I'll keep it brief. We've had a great year in our department. We've had some great projects. I'm just gonna highlight a few. Our interurban trail project continues to plug along. We've had great success in getting our funds. We were able to install the bridge last winter and spring. Completed that next section of the graveling and grading on the trail all the way out to River Road, which was a huge accomplishment. We are in the process, we have a signed contract with KAL Engineering, and that project is continuing to move forward, which we're very fortunate and glad to do. Couple other larger projects, Garmin Nature Preserve, we've been doing some interpretive signage and some restoration, and Carlin Weld Restoration. Both of those projects have been funded through donations and foundations, which, again, we're very grateful for. Wanted to touch on some of our grants. I know Mary's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on these grant programs. We received that TAP grant for the interurban project. We've received several recreational trail program grants, county conservation aid grants, and stewardship grants in the last year. So continuing to have a lot of success with our grant writing program and bringing those funds into our projects to make those projects successful. Continuing to work with a lot of volunteers on our projects in the field, bringing them in on various things. And lastly, one of the things I really wanted to highlight was the generosity that our department receives and the funds that come in through foundations, through donations, kind of across the board. And not least of which was the Brew With a View event that we've had out at Corf Park. And that sponsor being Tyranina Brewery in Lake Mills, who has continued to be a big supporter and advocate of our department. And lastly, thanks to the county board, especially our Parks Committee, for all of the support that we get from you guys. And yeah, that's all I got was my time. Was I under three minutes?
Pretty good.
Hopefully, pretty good.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We now go to public hearing on the 2020 recommended budget. Supervisor Jones, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing on the 2020 recommended budget.
Moved and seconded to open the public hearing on the budget. The budget is open. Do we need to have a vote on that? Okay. Is there any discussion on opening the public hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The hearing is open. We have one registrant to testify at the public hearing, Anita Martin of Lake Mills.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It looks like over the last year, the Jefferson County Land and Water Department's been down one person. Does the proposed 2020 budget eliminate the position that's been unfilled for the past few months? Or does it put it back in? It's important that the department be adequately staffed in order to protect our soil and our groundwater in Jefferson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to testify on the 2020 recommended budget? Anyone else? Supervisor Jones.
Mr. Chair, I move to end the public hearing.
Moved and seconded to end the public hearing. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The public hearing is ended. Now, also under special order of business, we have a presentation on the joint development agreement with Badger State Solar. Mr. Weimeyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, in front of you, you have a draft copy of a joint development agreement between Badger State Solar, Jefferson County, and the two townships of Jefferson and Oakland, where this project is located. So to start with, part of the reason we're taking a little different tact in the introduction of this. Normally, we go straight to a committee for a joint development agreement. In many cases, some of these items that you'll see in this agreement came from feedback specifically through the zoning committee and some public input that they had. But as this is a new project, it's a pretty significant project, we thought it best, and in concordance with the Chair, that we introduce it to the whole county board right from the start. So you all can have a chance to digest it, ask questions, and have dialogue with the committees and the public related to this project itself. Tonight is not a decision meeting. The purpose of tonight is to introduce this and get a commentary going of what was in this agreement and what might not be in agreement that folks might like to see, okay? So for clarification, we have two projects that have been talked about in public related to solar farms. One is to the west off of Highway 18 in the town of Jefferson, the town of Oakland. And there's a second one that has not moved forward with the PSC yet in terms of notification. That's the northeast portion of the county, specifically the town of Watertown, Exonia, Farmington, and Concord, I believe is where we're looking at it. The one we are talking about tonight is in front of the PSC. There is a notice, a public hearing in front of the PSC on November 6th that will be held at the county fair park grounds in the Activity Center. The public portion of those sessions are at 2:00 and 6:00. Make it available. So if you're interested in a public hearing related to this with the PSC, that is an opportunity for folks to talk through it. So why we're here tonight is, as we look at the rules and regulations and laws, and I'm gonna ask if Mr. Corporation Counsel can interject as I need to if I case and miss anything, is that when we have projects for megawatt production, over 100 megawatts, that goes through the Public Service Commission or the PSC route of licensing or approval. But there are many things that we felt were important to the local communities that needed to be talked about as part of this process. And so we engaged the developer to see if they had the willingness to put some of it on paper. And so that's what this document is tonight. The proposal is roughly 1,500 acres and 149 megawatts. And so you will see as part of the exhibits tonight is a section-by-section layout of the proposed engineering plans that they have been provided to us. This is also available on the Public Service Commission website, not specifically this exhibit, but the layout where this project's gonna take place. So I'm gonna try to highlight each section of this document, and then we'll talk through the next phases from there. So in the recitals is that first section. And this is pretty much just describing who the parties are. So this is a document in the jurisdiction of being the Public Service Commission. One thing we talked through is the facilities. And we've been having a lot of conversation on the term fences, landscaping, and access roads. And so you'll see that later on in the document. We talked through what fences are on page 10. And then part of the thing from a stats perspective, we want to know more of what the access roads were. And part of it was what was pervious or impervious, and what was the impact in terms of erosion in the future. So from the access road standpoint, the intent is these are service and maintenance roads within the solar farms themselves. They will use the existing soil level conditions that are in place today. And for the most part, it's gonna be a vegetation access road that will be having more mature mowing that takes place. There will be parts that will have gravel roads that have a higher impact, and those will be included in the licensing project through the PSC. Number six on this, one thing that you'll see is that we also make sure they can understand and we can ask for the reopen on this. And at any point in time, we can ask for mutual consent to change this document as we move forward with this project. On page two on the top, one thing that I want to point out is right now we are identifying the fact that PSC has jurisdiction over this. But we also want to include the fact that if the local governments in the future have an opportunity to have jurisdiction over this, that isn't contemplated in this document and that we could have a conversation that would take place in statutory change. On page two, you'll see various phases related to this project. So one is the planning phase. And really, this is just making sure we have the correspondence from the project back to the local governments related to this. So as you see, we have an objective timeline of three days. After we ask for an update, we will receive it. Now, this is upon the certificate of public convenience and necessity. That's basically approval by the PSC. So changes after that point meets those three days requirement. The next phase after the planning phase and approval by the PSC moves to the pre-construction schedule. And so we've built some specific timelines in here in terms of notifications that must be made to the county, to the townships, and also some of these properties are impacted by drainage districts. They have oversight of these areas as well. And so you'll see some requirements of 75 days. Again, we continue to have the three-day requirement if there's amended plan conclusions. Also in this document that you'll see besides those timelines for responding this back to local governance is under specifically number three. There are a lot of concerns related to studies of the impacts of solar panels. So you'll see the requirement of a glare, sound, and electromagnetic frequency in stormwater studies. Many of these have already been filed with the PSC, but as part of our requirement in the joint development agreement. Under number four and going into section number two, we talked a lot about the impacts of our roads, both for the townships and the county roads. So you'll see some of the requirements related to pre-inspection to include videotaping of the roads and post-inspection of the roads to insurance of damage to those roads and proper timely repairs of those roads. You also see in 2A, we talked through the specific roads that have been identified that will be utilized. If additional roads had to be utilized as part of this process, they must come back to the local jurisdiction, renegotiate the use of those roads. Under 2B, to quick highlight as well, once a determination made, repairs had to be made. We asked that those be done within 30 days. We wanted to make sure there's an objective timeline when those repairs must be done or upon agreement by the local body that can be extended out. Another concern that came up is drainage repair obligation. In many cases, it follows a similar format to the roads, that there'll be a pre-inspection and post-inspection. There's a requirement that the repairs must be done within 30 days as well. Excuse me, 90 days to remedy in this case. It has to be until a level of complete comparable to the pre-construction level. One area that you'll see under E that we continue to talk through with the developer is the setbacks for navigable waterways determined by the DNR. There are a few within this project's scope. We've been looking at how the fencing specifically applies to that. And so we're asking for, looking at 75 feet. They're asking for something a little closer in with the fencing requirements. One of the concerns that we have is the impact for potential drainage. So as you look in the plans, and we'll talk through those plans a little bit more, you'll see fencing schematics in there, crossing drainage areas. They will not be placing fencing in drainage areas. They have agreed not to do that. So that'll be amended in their final plans. For non-navigable drainage ditches, it's a 20-foot setback for the fencing. That's really to allow specifically the drainage districts that are sediments to go in so they can clean it out in an efficient manner, as they currently do. Under section four, this gets into the talk about utility share revenues. So what happens when you have a project that's greater than 100 megawatts? All the property of that project comes off the property tax rolls. It's a solar farm, it's a coal plant, it's a natural gas plant. The same thing happens. It comes off the tax rolls. By lieu of that, the county, the townships, or the cities, depending on the sighting, will receive what's called a utility shared revenue that's given to us by the state. Supervisor Christiansen belongs to a group on behalf of various counties that continuously looks at how that is distributed back to counties, townships, and municipalities. Currently, the county receives roughly $910,000 a year from that state shared revenue based on current facilities within the county. Under B, you'll see what the intent or the estimated amount that will be returned back to the counties and the two townships. And it's about almost $600,000 that will be given back to the counties. Now, there are two taxing bodies, however, that would not receive those funds. This is geared towards the townships and the county. And that's specifically MATC and the school districts impacted by that. So you'll see in the documents that the developer has agreed to maintain paying what they do today to those taxing bodies. Now, if you look at the overall taxing amount that comes out, if you look at the bottom of five, it's about $18,000. But they agreed to maintain at least what they're paying today. On page six, still under the section under sub G, this is the area that we continue to have some language negotiations on. And this is trying to look ahead to, in advance. So this section would apply if we see a law change to how the utility state share revenue is governed, how it's distributed, or does it go away altogether? And we want to make sure, to a certain extent, the townships and the counties are made whole. But it's an area we have to still negotiate the final language with the developer on because we're not exactly where we'd like it to be yet. So that's what the intent of that placeholder is for. Another part of the concern of this is assurances related to the financial stability of these companies in terms of when they do the construction and decommissioning. So that's what this section is designed to take care of. So under section A, this requires a $50,000 assurance in the pre-planning phase with an additional $100,000 during construction. Really, the intent of these two areas, if there's damage to a road, as example, a drainage area, and they do not fulfill the requirements that the county and the township have some funds available to fix that on behalf of those entities. So that's what those two sections are geared towards. Section B talks about decommissioning. And they have agreed to upfront provide a million dollars of bond or provide a letter of credit for decommissioning. And we think that's important to establish a precedence for potential future projects as well. Part of the process for these projects is it is governed by the PSC. So you'll see that in, specifically about two is at the 15th anniversary of this project, they actually owe back to the PSC a decommissioning plan when they determine the actual cost at that point that they perceived to be at decommissioning. Once that is determined, then you move down to section three and four. So if it is over a million dollars, section three will apply. And they would increase that amount of assurances back to the county if that's the case because that's an obligation they owe. Under four, if that decommissioning cost is less than a million dollars, they haven't a letter required, they would reduce it. So that's what's in this agreement right now. Number six is where we have, we received some commentary. And we want to continue to work through what's the best interest. And this is dealing with the setbacks, equipment heights, and vegetation of property owners. So item one is focused specifically on residential properties. And so you will see, and it's tough to see in the handout on the exhibits, identified residential properties that are not participants to this project. And you'll see one circle that's like a light pink, that's 100 feet from the residence. And the other is a larger red circles, 150 feet. It is not on every single page because not every single section has residents that are impacted by these projects right now. But that is an area we continue to have a conversation on of that, what is the appropriate distance? So right now, it's between 100 and 150 feet is what we're looking at. But that's dealing specifically with residents as we look ahead. Number two, this is similar, talking about waterways and navigable versus non-navigable. And that's an item that we're looking at for navigable waterways in terms of those side yard setbacks. For those that are deemed non-navigable, we continue to use the 20-foot setback that's been agreed to. On the top of page eight, on the last section on paragraph three, the other thing that has been agreed to is they will not remove vegetation within 75 feet of the ordinary high watermark of navigable ditches. And again, a concern about erosion and impacts that may have to those waterways. And then the sections four through 10, this is in essence for the most part using existing language within our project development for any project of setbacks from the right-of-way or centerline. And we use both objective standards because some actually have a dedicated right-of-way to measure from and some have to use the centerline because people own to the centerline of the property. So we're gonna make sure both measurements were included in this document for each of the highways. B talks through the sound impacts and utilization of existing regulations that the county has in place. And then C talks through the height, project height. They have agreed to keep the height no greater than 12 foot with the exception of the project substations where the power will go. In many cases, those substations already exist. So 12 foot is what we're at. Section D talks through the growth and vegetation that will take place. And we specifically cite to the vegetation management plan that has already been put on file with the PSC. It talks through trying to limit the use of chemicals related to invasive and noxious weeds, but understanding it has to be taken care of. They have explored the utilization of grazing animals to help in that endeavor. And so as part of that process, though, we do have on the books things related, especially in the land and water department that NEA kinda talked through, requirements of how that is handled. And so they have agreed to follow those regulations we have in place related to those grazing animals, including the number of animal units that we can have. Section E talks through the vegetated buffer in terms of transition zones between properties and specifically the height, in many cases being three to five feet. One area they have agreed to towards the end of that relates to a case-by-case basis working with non-participatory landowners as additional vegetation or visual barriers that could be installed to protect those property owners. F is the whole section on fencing and describes what that fencing will be constructed on. In many cases, there's a code requirement related to it, especially when we start talking to substations to protect it from electrical code issue. Two, we look to incorporate areas of passage of small mammals. That was a concern. If we have a lot of fencing, how do we assist those animals that had used that to go across the countryside? Three talks through some of the processes, working with the DNR and wildlife biologists when we look at larger wildlife access and passage crossings. Specifically, we're focused on deer in that area. And then section seven and beyond, this is Mr. Ward's favorite sections because this is a lot of legacies. It talks through assignment and interest of the companies as they install it in terms of, we want to ensure that the agreement we have here does transfer with ownership or utilization of this in the future. So we thought that, we want to include that. Again, we want to ensure that it's a good faith cooperation, some of these things that we need to continue to work on. If this is approved, we want to ensure that there's ongoing negotiations and bargaining related to how this may look in the future. Everyone's favor is identification. Mr. Ward will give you a class identification if you really want it. And then compliance with laws, entire agreement. And then we talked through disputes. And then really, we're looking at disputes taking place within the county. And then the parties to the agreement, we include the townships. The townships are aware of this document. And we've received agreement that this is heading in the right direction from at least the initial members and then the county itself. And then behind there is, as I said, is exhibit that was a draft exhibit provided to us that shows section by section where this project is intended to take place, has been filed with the PSC. It provides in yellow what the project boundary is. It shows where potential residents that are impacted. It shows where the access roads may be. It also talks through where the primary area are. And then they have to by PSC rules, have to show where alternative and optional arrays are. So that does not mean those will be built. But there's areas, because of wetlands or other things, they cannot build in their primary area. Those are backup options they could fall to. Also at your table tonight that had to be filed was the town of Oakland and the city of Jefferson have provided communication that they are in support of this project to the PSC. They've CC'd the entire county board. So we want to ensure that you are aware of that communication as well. So next steps. So basically, we have some parallel things that are going on. Obviously, the PSC has their requirements of looking at this project. And one of the processes coming up, as I mentioned before, is that public hearing on November 6th. From a county standpoint, the determination was made this should go to the executive committee. And the reason why it's going to the executive committee was the fact it includes so many aspects of county operations, from zoning issues to land and water issues to financial considerations, to highways and roadway systems. So it's trying to be a catch-all. So on October 30th, the executive committee is gonna talk about this. So I want to encourage folks if they have questions, ideas. Obviously, you can reach out to those members beforehand. But that's the date and time this will be discussed and potentially recommended to the county board, depending on that discussion that day. So November 30th at 8:30, we'll kinda talk through what room it would be in based on attendance. But that's the next opportunity to have a conversation related to this document for discussion. Obviously, in that interim, if you have questions related to it, please feel free to reach out to Attorney Ward and myself. Matt Zingle, our zoning administrator, was also involved with this. Mark, from a financial perspective. Patricia Cicero from Land and Waters involved, and Bill Kern as well. So if you have questions related to that, please feel free to reach out so we can talk through some of the things that we had to work out. October 30th, yes, sir. So that was a quick down and dirty of what this development agreement is. We want to hit some of the highlights of what we ensure we try to cover based on feedback we have received. I know it's not entirety of what some comments that have been received. There's areas we want to continue to try to work with the potential developer on. But this is the open dialogue to begin. Mr. Chair, I think for the most part that covers what the joint development agreement is at this point. Attorney Ward, did I miss anything?
You did not. Attorney Ward indicates you did not. So this is an opportunity for dialogue with Mr. Weimeyer, if you wish. Mr. Weimeyer, you may call on members as they ask to be recognized.
So any initial questions, I guess, related to this? Part of the reason we're introducing this format is we want to make sure people have time to digest it and read it, and then if they have questions, come back. But we're available only time, but obviously tonight as well.
Supervisor Renard.
I just have a quick question. What is the projected useful life of this project?
So 25 to 50 years. Our understanding, because we have not seen the leases signed with the property owners, I know there's, some folks are aware of them. But I understand most of these are initial 25 years with options to go beyond that 25 years. Potentially, yeah. We don't, I can't say it with certainty to you tonight. But my understanding is from what I've heard that that is what the deal is.
Supervisor Nealon.
Are there any similar installations we could drive by within, you know, 50 miles or anything?
It's a little more than 50, bud.
Yeah, well, the city of Jefferson have built their own. And I think they actually referenced that in their letter. That has much smaller scope to what we're talking through here. We actually met with the class beforehand, and this is fairly new to Wisconsin. There is a larger project that the group that's looking at the northeast corner called Invenergy. Badger Hollow is constructing out in Iowa County right now. I think that has just started. There's some other projects outside of the state. But in terms of immediate location, we'll have to get back to you if we are aware by amount. We have specific ones right now.
Okay, plenty of time for you to read, digest, ask questions of the appropriate department heads, if you wish. And this will be taken up next at the executive committee meeting on the 30th of this month. Thank you, Mr. Weimeyer. Thank you, Mr. Waymeyer. Also in special order of business, we have broadband Public Service Commission process update, Mr. Waymeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this has been a topic that's been talked about for some time. Obviously, the county board has been engaged from strategic planning process to looking at approval of a pilot project, to approval of the broadband forward grant through the PSC process as well. And we introduced our next plan of this at the budget presentation last month. The broadband committee, along with many of our communities, wants us to think big. And so we want to talk a little bit more of where we're at with the stage of what we're proposing for an application for a grant with the PSC for broadband in Jefferson County. And part of this is to make sure everyone understands what we're talking about, because I understand some folks wanted some more information related to this, talking through some of our next steps. And the other part is we need support. As we go through this process to get the grant from the PSC for this, it's going to be, we anticipate being a very competitive cycle. There's over twenty-two million dollars that have been designated in the governor's budget that's been approved by joint finance, which is much more money that's been in the past. But it's going to be competitive because we're not the only area that's looking at ways, how do we improve broadband services to our citizens, to businesses, to agribusiness? And so part of this is how do we get support back to the county and help show a demonstration of this? I will tell you, when our comprehensive review consultants met with all our communities looking at planning and needs of the county as a whole, I think there's one consistent message that came from the townships and municipalities and geographical locations alike, and that was need for broadband. And I think that came from Matt, almost every single one, correct? And so I believe there's a lot of support on this. And so where we're at today is on Thursday, the broadband working committee is going to have our next meeting, and they're going to be looking at two specific items. So the first one is there's a new program through the PSC called telecommuter or resolutions that you're supporting telecommuter. Now, this is a little bit different than the broadband forward grant. It's actually a little more of a planning document that you were encouraging the opportunities to look at it. It's not as obligatory as that broadband forward grant was, but it's just a support mechanism from the county saying we're looking at ways to improve that environment. The second item we'll be looking at is a resolution on support of the grant going forward. So the grant requirements were released on September fifth and is due on December nineteenth. And so that gives us a limited time to put everything together. So this resolution will look at the support from the county board, looking at how we incorporate it into our budget that we talked about last month, and we're talking about potential partnerships. And I talked through that briefly last month, but one area is that we know that grants have done well in the past has been association with economic development. And so we're going to partner with our economic development agencies in support of this. We're also looking at opportunities to collaborate with Dodge County. We still need to have separate applications in from Dodge County, but there's a lot of overlap of service areas that could take place between especially our northern boundary line and the southern boundary line. So that's going to take place on Thursday morning at eight-thirty. So those who are interested in terms of that discussion will be over at UW Extension Building, if I recall. And we'll confirm that, but it was sent out as part of the agenda packet. As I tried to show on the maps last month, our intent is try to get a significant coverage of those who are underserved and underserved within the county. We're hoping getting close between seventy, seventy-five percent. There's still some analysis that's going on if that can be achievable with this process. It might be lower than that, so I'm kind of buffering myself as we look at the final technology behind this, but we think it's possible to make a pretty significant impact. The other partnership that's also unique is there's a requirement on the grant process, you have to engage with a private provider. That is a requirement of the grant. Well, we're going to engage with two private providers. And we have them willing to work together. We're working through a memorandum of how that plays out, but we think that's going to be a positive in terms of how we can be competitive in this grant process to provide these services. After the October twenty-fourth meeting, our intent is then bring those items back to the county board on November twelfth that I just talked about. That would be after the budget is approved. The budget's not approved, and obviously we can't move forward on the resolution for the grant. So that will take place. And as I indicated, the intent is the grant will be turned in by December nineteenth. And then the way the grant awards are designated, we're looking at by the end of the first quarter of 2020, we'd know if we would receive the grant. So that's kind of where we're at. Again, this is one of those items that I knew as I heard, got some feedback that we need to do a little more communication back to the board on where we're at on this. Obviously, we have a lot of supervisors who are engaged in the process for our broadband working groups, so I encourage folks to attend that as well as we look ahead to the future. So I guess Supervisor Renard, did I miss anything in what we've been talking about?
No, but I think the meeting has been scheduled for eight-thirty in room one-twelve.
Thank you.
Got moved.
Thank you, Mr. Waymeyer. We now go to the Finance Committee with a resolution disallowing the claim of Gary Lex. Supervisor Jones, please.
Resolution number twenty nineteen forty-four. A claim has been made against Jefferson County for damages. The claim has been reviewed by the county insurance, Carrie Wimmick, and has been, was recommended for disallowance based on the finding that the county has no liability for this claim and is not legally responsible for alleged damages. This resolution formally denies the claim filed against Jefferson County and directs the Corporation Council to give the claimant notice of disallowance. On October eighth, two thousand and nineteen, the Finance Committee considered this resolution voted to forward to the county board for approval. Fiscal note, this matter has been referred to Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company and will be resolved in accordance with the terms of the county policy. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to disallow the claim of Gary Lex. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Resolution is adopted. Also from the Finance Committee, a resolution disallowing the claim of Melissa Mason. Supervisor Jones.
Resolution number twenty nineteen forty-five. Claim has been made against Jefferson County for damages. The claim has been reviewed by the county insurance, Carrie Wimmick, and was recommended for disallowance based on the finding that the county has no liability for this claim and is not legally responsible for alleged damages. This resolution formally denies the claim filed against Jefferson County, directs the Corporation Council to give the claimant notice of disallowance. On October eighth, two thousand and nineteen, the Finance Committee considered this resolution voted to forward to the county board for approval. Fiscal note, the matter has been referred to Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company and resolved in accordance with the terms of the county policy. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to disallow the claim of Melissa Mason. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Resolution is adopted. Next is appointments by the county administrator. Mr. Waymeyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By virtue of the authority invested in fifty-nine point one-eight, parent two, parent B of the Wisconsin statutes, we respect confirmation of the following appointments. Mr. Richard Jones of Waterville, Wisconsin, and Ms. Cynthia Kraus of Jefferson, Wisconsin, the Human Services Board for a three-year term ending November first, 2022.
Moved and seconded to confirm the appointments. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The appointments are confirmed. Next is appointments by the county board chair. By virtue of the authority invested in me in section, under section fifty-nine point five-four, parent eight, I hereby request confirmation of the following appointment. Robin Untz, Town of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, to the Historic Sites Preservation Council for a term ending April twenty-one, 2020. Moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The appointment is confirmed. Now, public comment of a general nature, would any member of the public wish to address the board at this time? Anybody? Okay, we'll move to announcements. Announcements. Are there any announcements? Mr. Waymeyer.
Just a reminder, any supervisor amendments, we ask to be in and file with the county administrator's office by noon on November fourth. If you have any questions or comments or need help with the phone network, just reach out to Mark or myself, and we'll help you through that process.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Chair has an announcement. I will not be a candidate for reelection in this coming April. Any other announcements? Okay, now we go to closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eighty-five, parent one, parent G, Wisconsin statutes to confer with legal counsel.